Good afternoon and welcome to the Sandro Day O'Connor Institute's Constitution Series, Equality and Justice for All. My name is Miles Link. I'm an emeritus professor of law at the Sandro Day O'Connor College of Law at Arizona State University and Senior Assistant Disciplinary Counsel in the District of Columbia's Office of Disciplinary Counsel. I've also been privileged to serve on the Institute's Board of Directors. Therefore, on behalf of Justice O'Connor and the Sandro Day O'Connor Institute for American Democracy, we are delighted to have you with us. Today, we are honored to have with us Ms. Cheryl Brown Henderson. Ms. Henderson is one of the three daughters of the late Reverend Oliver L. Brown, who, in the fall of 1950, along with twelve other parents in Topeka, Kansas, filed suit on behalf of their children against the local Topeka Board of Education. Because the case challenged the state's segregation laws, it was heard by a three-judge panel at the U.S. District Court for the District of Kansas. The court ruled in favor of the school board. The plaintiffs then appealed directly to the Supreme Court of the United States. This case was subsequently joined with cases from Delaware, South Carolina, Virginia, and Washington, D.C., all challenging the legal segregation of the races in public schools in those states and the District of Columbia. When the cases came before the Supreme Court in 1952, the court consolidated all five cases under the name of Brown v. Board of Education. Thurgood Marshall, later Supreme Court Justice Marshall, personally argued the case before the court, assisted by his colleagues at the NAACP, including, among others, Spotswood Robinson, Jack Greenberg, Constance Baker Motley, and James M. Nabrit Jr. One of the cases before the Supreme Court involved South Carolina. And a little-known fact, one of the attorneys representing South Carolina was John W. Davis, a renowned corporate lawyer and the Democratic Party's candidate for president in 1924. He lost to Calvin Coolidge. Brown v. Board of Education was the culmination of a legal strategy attacking segregation in public education that relied on the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. This clause is in a sentence that also contains the privileges and immunities clause and the due process clause. The sentence reads as follows: "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." This strategy stretched back over a number of years and went beyond just the segregation of African-American children from white children. For example, in a 1947 case, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, in an en banc decision, meaning all of the judges of the court heard the case, not just the three-judge panel, ruled in Mendez v. Westminster School District of Orange County that segregating Mexican-American schoolchildren from white children on the basis of their national origin was an unconstitutional violation of the equal protection clause. In fact, the Mendez family was from Puerto Rico, not Mexico, but when they moved into the Westminster School District, their children were forced to attend Westminster segregated schools for Mexicans. And here in Arizona in the 1950s, lawyers, including Hazel B. Daniels and Herbert Finn, brought cases to desegregate the public schools. And in 1953, a year before Brown was decided, Maricopa County Superior Court Judge Fred Struckmeyer decided the case Phillips v. Phoenix Union High Schools and Junior College District, involving the George Washington Carver High School, the only legally segregated high school in the state. Judge Struckmeyer ruled that the Arizona law permitting school boards to segregate pupils by race was unconstitutional, and the Phoenix Union High Schools District's segregation of African-American students was therefore illegal. The following year, in May 1954, just a few days before the Supreme Court issued its decision in Brown, another Maricopa County Superior Court Judge Charles Bernstein ruled in the case of Hurd v. Davis that segregation of African-American students in Phoenix's Wilson Elementary School District was unconstitutional and illegal because it violated the equal protection clause. In fact, the U.S. Supreme Court, as it was preparing its decision in Brown, requested a copy of Judge Bernstein's decision. Both Judge Struckmeyer and Judge Bernstein were subsequently elevated to the Arizona Supreme Court. Thurgood Marshall, later Supreme Court Justice Marshall, and the NAACP had been chipping away at racial segregation in education going back to the 1930s. In Murray v. Maryland in 1936, the Maryland Court of Appeals ruled that the University of Maryland Law School could not deny an applicant admission because of his race. And in a 1938 decision in Missouri, Exwell Gaines versus S.L. Canada, Registrar, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that since Missouri had a law school for white applicants, the equal protection clause required the state to provide an equal opportunity for blacks. And since it had no law school for black students, it had to admit Mr. Gaines to its previously all-white school. Then, in two decisions handed down in 1950, Swett v. Painter and McLaren v. Oklahoma Board of Regents of Higher Education, the U.S. Supreme Court further eroded the separate-but-equal doctrine. In Swett, the court ordered the state of Texas to admit Mr. Herman Swett, a black student, to its previously all-white University of Texas law school because of the blatant inequalities between the state's white law school and its hastily erected and woefully underfunded black law school. The black law school was separate but not equal. And in the McLaren decision handed down on the same day as Swett, the Supreme Court ordered the University of Oklahoma to cease immediately its unequal and discriminatory treatment of George McLaren, a black doctoral student. Among other indignities, he was required to sit in class apart from the white students and to eat at a separate time and table from white students. It is against this backdrop that Brown was decided. Although Thurgood Marshall raised a variety of legal issues on appeal, the most common was that the separate school systems for blacks and whites were inherently unequal and thus violated the equal protection clause. Furthermore, relying on sociological data such as that provided by sociologist Dr. Kenneth Clark, Thurgood Marshall also argued that segregated school systems could make black children feel inferior to white children, and thus such a system should not be legally permissible. Meeting to decide the case, the justices of the Supreme Court realized they were deeply divided over the issues raised. While most did want to declare segregation in public schools unconstitutional, they had various reasons for doing so, and not all were willing to do so. Unable to come to a solution by June of 1953, at the end of the court's term, Justice Felix Frankfurter suggested, and the court agreed, to rehear the cases in December 1953. However, during the intervening months, Chief Justice Fred Vinson died. He was replaced as chief justice by Earl Warren, the governor of California. After the case was reheard in 1953, Chief Justice Warren was able to bring all of the justices together to agree to support a unanimous decision declaring segregation in public schools unconstitutional. Therefore, on May 14, 1954, Chief Justice Warren delivered the opinion of the court, stating that, quote, "We conclude that in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate-but-equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal." Brown v. Board of Education has been called perhaps the most important Supreme Court decision of the 20th century. Reverend Brown died in 1961, before knowing the profound impact this case would have on his daughters as well as our nation's children. Reverend Brown's daughter Cheryl is the founding president of the Brown Foundation for Educational Equity Excellence in Research and owner of Brown and Associates Educational Consulting Firm. She recently added author to her resume with the release of Recovering Untold Stories: An Enduring Legacy of the Brown v. Board of Education Decision. As we begin our program, we invite you to send in your questions during our Q&amp;A following Ms. Henderson's presentation via YouTube Live Chat or a Facebook comment. Now, please join me in welcoming Cheryl Brown Henderson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone from the West Coast and the Midwest and the East Coast, and I'm very pleased to be here. And I commend the Sandro Day O'Connor Institute for American Democracy for this series on the Constitution. I had the privilege of meeting Justice O'Connor in 1988 at a conference entitled Women in the Constitution convened by four former first ladies, Lady Burt Johnson, Wasna Carter, Betty Ford, and Pat Nixon. And the idea behind the conference was that this would be our constitutional convention as women, and take a look and examines in a scholarly manner the founding mothers, if you will. And at the close of the proceedings, we even signed to be able to have our document placed in the Library of Congress as the founders had 200 years prior. But it was an excellent opportunity to hear Justice O'Connor and Barbara Jordan, Credit Scott King, Dr. King's sister Christine King Ferris, and just a host of luminaries. My mother and I were also on program. But what we want to talk about today is Brown v. Board. But before I get into that topic, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge that the struggles we've had recently in our national discourse and politically. And it reminded me so much when I heard the young poet speak at the inaugural of a poem written by Kansas' own Langston Hughes, "Let America Be America Again." And I encourage all of you to read that poem. And also the words by James Baldwin, who talked about how history lives in all of us and influences everything that we do. And I think we are seeing that with this surprise, well, not surprising, but worrisome turn toward the emergence or resurgence of white supremacy. Well, Brown v. Board of Education, as Attorney Link says, is stated, is considered one of the most important judicial decisions in our history, very much held because of its reliance on the Fourteenth Amendment. Interesting for me, in starting the foundation back in 1988, one of the reasons we wanted to start the foundation was the legal shorthand. The citation of Brown is Oliver L. Brown et al. versus the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas, et al. And E.T.A.L., those four little letters, et alia, Latin words, relegate, you know, hundreds of people to what I call legal wasteland, our historic footnotes. So we wanted very much to have a mechanism by way we could locate, bring people together under the same tent, so to speak. And it's been an enriching experience to find out about the sacrifices people made in Delaware and Virginia, Washington, D.C., South Carolina, and not like Kansas. Kansas is an interesting place, and I want to talk about the personal, because I think that when we hear Supreme Court decisions, we immediately think of the law. We immediately think of the details and the litigation and what happened in court. But we seldom think about the name and the humanity behind the names on those cases, the Miranda family, the Loving family, the Tinker family, the Karamatsu family. Now, all of these are people whose lives changed when their names were then etched in history on something as important as United States Supreme Court decision. And I offer one correction. Brown v. Board was announced by Justice Warren on May 17, 1954, at 12:52 p.m. And I know Eisenhower was also surprised at Justice Warren's insistence that it be an unanimous opinion, since he had presided over the internment of Japanese during World War II. But the law is the law, and Brown v. Board is a clear example of how African-Americans were able to use the rule of law to gain access to constitutional rights. But my parents, Leola and Oliver Brown, were living in what I call a crucible of contradictions in the state of Kansas. Kansas was unique in that it had entered the Union as a free state. And following the Civil War, emissaries from the state of Kansas traveled south to encourage formerly enslaved people to come live in Kansas. And they did so, which resulted in Kansas succumbing to the separate-but-equal edict of the Plessy decision. But on a personal note, my mother's family came to Kansas when she was two years old, and they had been sharecroppers, Mississippi and then Arkansas. So I'm just one generation removed from the brutal system and the inequable system with sharecropping. My father's family immigrated to Kansas from Missouri, where his great-grandparents had been fathered by the slaveholders on the plantations where the two women that birthed them lived. So it is an interesting legacy on my father's side. During their upbringing and coming up in this crucible of contradictions, Kansas was also a place that had a peculiar way of viewing segregation. First of all, Kansas believed in its philosophy, in its legislature, through its governance, that an uneducated citizen was a dangerous citizen, and therefore, education was to provided to all citizens. So my parents went to segregated elementary schools only through eighth grade and integrated high schools, which is a peculiar situation, because the high schools were integrated for academics but not extracurricular. There were two basketball teams, two football teams, two cheerleading squads, two proms. So anything that was considered socializing was then segregated. So it was a peculiar situation, and they came of age during that time. My father was two years older than my mom, and upon graduation, he worked at a mortuary. And at the time, Topeka was full of African-Americans that we all call strivers. They were people that were business owners or pastors or teachers or educational administrators, and they set the bar pretty high. So even though Topeka had four segregated schools for African-American children, kindergarten through, actually, first grade through eighth grade, then they went on to high school, the quality of those four schools was never in doubt. Now, for years, my mother and her fellow segregated school students would come together to honor and acknowledge the rich experience they'd had during that time. So Topeka had 22 elementary schools at that time, 18 for white and four for African-Americans. So African-American parents had to wait until their children were assigned to a particular school. But that was the experience of my parents going to school. But they also, because of that, because of the determination on the part of their teachers, education was the be-all, end-all. You know, it wasn't popular culture that we aspire to. They aspired to be educated people, to be in that striver community, and that's exactly how they conducted their lives. So my mother, upon graduation from high school, had been in the National Honor Society, yet did not follow a higher education path. And my father followed the path of a lot of men of his time. They were living in the margins of society. But he was a very civic-minded person. He had a great uncle who had been a newspaper man. He had a great aunt who had been involved in politics. So he saw the importance of being engaged civically. So in his early 30s, when a friend of his knocked on the door, see, Brown v. Board was not something that the litigants pursued on their own. The NAACP in Topeka, in our case, organized this case. Kansas uniquely was the site of 11 school desegregation cases before Brown v. Board. The first case in Kansas was 1881, Tenen versus Ottawa, Kansas. So every few years, African-Americans were taking this issue to state Supreme Court, recognizing that education is the foundation of not only citizenship but in being able to have a livelihood and contribute to society. So Brown v. Board was the 12th case in the state of Kansas. And the only uniqueness was that instead of state Supreme Court, the NAACP filed this case in federal district court. The presiding judge, Walter Huxman, in federal district court, had been appointed to the federal court. He was a former governor of Kansas. So there were a lot of intersectionality, you know, in this whole process. So in the summer of 1950, a friend of my father, who was an attorney for the NAACP, came to our home and explained to my parents that they were working on a school desegregation case to integrate the elementary schools, and they needed parents with elementary-age children. And in our home, my sister Linda was the only child in school at the time. My sister Terry would soon join her during the proceedings in Brown v. Board. So, you know, I think it's an interesting dynamic that people presume that Brown v. Board was something that my father, Oliver Brown, pursued on his own, but it was something that came to him and all of the litigants in the Kansas case. So by the end of the summer, the NAACP had recruited 13 families to be plaintiffs in the case they were putting together. And among those plaintiffs was another Brown. So a lot of what you'll hear online is that Brown was selected because he was alphabetically first, my father, and that's not so, and that Darlene Brown, a fellow plaintiff, would have been alphabetically first. So they were all told to locate the nearest white school to their home, take their child or children in a witness, and then report to the NAACP what happened. It's believed that all of the white principals had been tipped off because the script was pretty much the same as far as what they said. The quirk in all of this, however, is that when the fall of 1950 arrived and the plaintiffs were asked to experiment in this way, my father ended up being the only man among the litigants in Topeka. There were 12 women, married women, homemakers, the majority of them, and my father. My mother was expecting me, and so she did not get involved. I bring this issue up because February 28, 1951, when Brown was filed, that's when it became known as Oliver L. Brown et al. versus the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas. And we believe that he was selected to be the lead plaintiff, not because he was first chosen, he was the 10th plaintiff to sign on, but because he was, in fact, the only man, you know, that gender politics clearly at play, and so maybe we could talk about that at length in another discussion. So it was almost happenstance that the Topeka case ended up being named for my father. And after the litigants signed on and the NAACP filed their case, life went back to normal, you know, nothing exceptional. Most people in our community didn't know that this case was being argued in district court downtown. I will say, though, that as Attorney Link mentioned, Thurgood Marshall, and I do want to acknowledge Charles Hamilton Houston, who was a mentor and teacher of Thurgood Marshall, and who was the person that brought Justice Marshall, Thurgood Marshall, then as young attorney, and others from Howard University Law School to work with him and the NAACP as they worked on first teacher salary cases and then higher education cases before that. But it's significant that even before there was an NAACP, that African-American parents in Kansas had the wherewithal to recognize that the law was being violated. Kansas law was very simple. It indicated that cities of the first class, meaning cities of 15,000 or larger, could optionally segregate their elementary schools only, not their junior high schools, not their high schools. And it may have been an economic decision, that it made economic sense that you could not segregate at the other two levels. I really don't know the answer, but that was the law on the books in Kansas that governed the type of education that we see. So my parents, as I said, being surrounded by strivers, my father saying yes to his friend, attorney Charles Scott, he joined the team of litigants for the NAACP. And during that time, because he was a civic-minded person, because he'd always been among the strivers, if you will, he began to study for the ministry, taking courses in theology and English at the local university and Chicago Bible College. And he was ordained at age 35 in 1953, excuse me, he was assigned to pastor, his first church, St. Mark African Methodist Episcopal Church. So that was part of his whole process of being a leadership and being able to exhibit the civic spirit and understanding that he had early on. But they were young people, simply raising their children, and no membership in the NAACP. They were not activists, you know, those things are just not so. He had not been in World War II because he had been born with an enlarged heart and could not go into the military. So there's so many misnomers about Brown, but the most important thing is it was a collective action, and it was brought about by the NAACP. It was an organizational campaign that had been going on for a long time in the other places that were combined with Brown. And South Carolina was unique in that they were wanting transportation initially for children, you know, walking five, six, seven miles to school. Now, Delaware had two cases in that early on, much like Arizona and others, they had allowed African-American children into their high school, but only a small group. And then Virginia, which is my favorite of the Brown cases, because it was brought by teenagers who understood the barriers and the artificial barriers that they were being faced with. And they themselves wrote to Oliver Hill in Richmond, Virginia, and organized the case with the help of Francis Griffin. And then the Washington, D.C. case, which was organized by a gentleman that was a barber, had a barber shop. But it was part of a group of consolidated parents that, again, recognized that African-American children, their children, were not having access to equal educational opportunity, going to school in shifts in D.C. because the high school was overcrowded. So all the circumstances were unique and different, and we do believe that when Kansas arrived on appeal at the Supreme Court, because Briggs versus Elliott out of South Carolina arrived on appeal before Kansas, that Kansas was a free state, Kansas was a border state. We do believe that the court made a conscious decision to use Kansas as a lead case because it was out of the realm of North versus South again, out of the realm of relitigating the Civil War. So there's so many nuances encapsulated in that. But here we sit. We started the Brown Foundation in 1988 to pay tribute to the attorneys and the community activists and all of the 200-plus families who were plaintiffs in Brown v. Board of Education. Each case had local attorneys that worked along with Justice Marshall and his legal team, and each case was held together, the plaintiffs were held together by what we call community organizers, Reverend Griffin in Virginia, McKinley Burnett in Topeka, Barbara Johns and others in Virginia. So anyway, I want you to know in my ramblings that this was something we're very proud of, but we always take the time to convey that it was the NAACP, through their organization, through their campaign, their resources, and their brilliant legal team, that made Brown v. Board possible. I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. A couple of things, the very success of the NAACP in bringing these cases led to backlash in certain states which passed laws to try to prevent the NAACP from doing it, based on old common law doctrines of barrity and champertry, which prohibit lawyers from stirring up lawsuits. And in a 1963 decision, NAACP v. Button, the Supreme Court ruled that a nonprofit organization seeking to vindicate constitutional rights may bring cases and encourage litigants to bring cases so that the courts can resolve these constitutional issues. And so they vindicated and validated the NAACP's strategy. Ms. Henderson also mentioned a case, I should have mentioned, Plessy v. Ferguson, and that was an 1896 decision which upheld the separation of races and said that they did not violate the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment so long as the facilities were separate but equal. And that case arose in the context of interstate transportation, it involved a railroad, but it was applied to public education as well, and many states were very happy to see that decision, and that encouraged states to adopt Jim Crow segregation laws. And so that was in 1896, and beginning in the 1930s, those various litigants began challenging, successfully challenging, that doctrine culminating in Brown. challenging, successfully challenging, that doctrine culminating in Brown v. Board of Education. And yes, by the way, the Brown case was decided on May 17th, 1954, not May 14th.
I would like to add, before we get into the questions, because I think it's an important part of what you just explained, talking about the NAACP, and that was the 1957 pushback on the part of the United States Congress through the Southern Manifesto, which is commonly known. And the manifesto is shocking to me in that nearly 100 elected officials in the House and the Senate came together and wrote this document of defiance, basically saying that the Supreme Court had overstepped, a judicial overreach, we've heard that term, but also saying that the South and they were upsetting an amicable relationship that they had with African-Americans in the South, which of course is laughable, but also giving a signal to southern states in particular that, you know, their defiance of Brown v. Board would be supported by at least a segment of the United States Congress. When you even go back as far as Dred Scott, now you have to look at the Supreme Court's opportunities, in my view. In 1857 with Dred Scott, the Supreme Court could have decided differently, but perhaps not because the Fourteenth Amendment had not been ratified yet, so that certainly is an excusable reason to suggest that African-Americans could never be citizens. And then you go into 1896 with Plessy versus Ferguson, which we all know, you know, separate was really never intended to be equal. Now, all of these things, in my view, were the pathway to what we see now, and in many ways, it's a history that some of the people that star in the Capitol are living in, as James Baldwin says, "History lives within us." Some believe that there is a certain element that is, in fact, to always be on top and does, in fact, own the idea of supremacy. So we have a history of these Supreme Court decisions that could have been different, and we wouldn't be sitting talking about Brown today.
Very good, very true. Let me go to the questions now. We have some questions that have been posted. Ms. Anderson, how did Brown v. Board of Education personally impact your education?
The interesting thing about our family, and perhaps is true for the other litigants, that Brown v. Board was something that started showing up in our textbooks. And you have to realize that when you're coming of age, you know, you don't want to call attention to yourself, period. And my father died in 1961 when I was 10 years old, and so even though Brown v. Board has been my entire life, I was born in 1950, it was still something that we didn't fully understand, and we hid from. So it didn't impact my education in that way because my mother was the quintessential 1950s homemaker. So when Dad died, you know, the important issue for the family was keeping the family together, relocating because Dad was a minister and we lived in church housing. So outside of knowing that education was something that was expected of us, you know, Brown v. Board was not in the equation. And it wasn't until I went to college, and when I started pursuing a career in teacher education, did I really start researching, acknowledging, learning more about, and little bit of ownership of Brown v. Board of Education. But it was just one of those things that, because my father died without really talking about this, which was not conversation we had at home, we don't know because he died without sharing with us how he felt about that experience. So it was sort of an odd dynamic to know that in my history book, we're talking about Brown, there may be a photo of my father and my sister, yet I wasn't sure what that was about, and I just knew that it was something that I wasn't prepared to confront. But when I went off to college, got into teacher education, became a teacher, I started recognizing the value and the rationale and the need to be a good steward of this history. So it didn't have an impact directly. And I will say, I felt like I'd missed out, because I started school in the wake of Brown v. Board in 1955, and I've only gone to integrated schools, kindergarten through graduate school. And kindergarten through graduate school, I've never had a teacher of color, never had a Latina teacher, African-American teacher. And I think it was, it's something I missed out on, because I missed that mentor in front of the classroom. I missed the opportunity to see someone that looked like me as an educational leader, because I listened to my mother and sister talk about the dynamic in the segregated schools and how it was a family environment, and how there was this demand that you learn and you do your best, and that you always represent yourself, your family, your community as young men and young women. I missed that opportunity. So it did impact my education in that way, in that I didn't have that experience.
Ms. Anderson, when we spoke before, as we prepared for today's session, you mentioned the Mendez, the Westminster School District case, and I had the impression that case had a particular resonance for you. Can you talk about what the meaning of that case is for you?
Yeah, the resonance for me was, I've come to know Lilo and his sister in Mendez versus Westminster, and I've been to California on several occasions to be in their company. And I guess it resonated with me because even though they were not African-American, their experiences were very similar. And early on, you know, the parents and the families in Mendez, you know, recognized that the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment was being violated. The constitutional rights of African-Americans in all of the amendments, 13th, 14th, and 15th, had been subverted very early on. But just getting to know what their experience was, the Brown Foundation, one of our curriculum resources is a curriculum newsletter, and you can certainly go to our website at brownvboard.org and download anything that's there, or order any of the resources that are there. And in one of those resources, we do cover in detail the Mendez case, and I would encourage you to read that.
Out of your work with your foundation, what do you think we need to do to provide greater educational opportunity today for all children?
Well, I think we need to have the political will, first of all. And I have always been an opponent of having the Secretary of Education be a civil service position and not something that changes every four to eight years. Because of that dynamic, because it is an appointed position, every four to eight years, our classroom teachers have to adjust to a new agenda, depending on who's sitting in that position. And it disrupts the continuity of education and the flow of education. And I think it lends itself to not building on accomplishments under previous administration because we have to change. So having the political will, first of all, to acknowledge the importance of education. Now, teaching our children is not rocket science, but we have, in fact, engaged in tinkering with the resources because of how we fund schools with property taxes. If you're living in an impoverished community, your tax base is not going to be adequate and certainly not going to be comparable to tax bases someone living in a wealthy suburban community. So the resources are going to be disparate. There's going to be a resource gap, which in my view also leads to achievement gaps. If you are a teacher that has students that have fallen behind, and what would help you the most is a paraprofessional, but the resources aren't there for your district to hire a paraprofessional for you to have that assistance in your classroom, there are little things, if you will, that could be done to make sure that our children... And there's so many forms of education, whether they're homeschooling and private schools and charter schools and parochial schools and public schools. And, you know, you just look at all the ways children are educated. I really think that what we're lacking is leadership from the federal governmental level that offers a kind of continuity that would help organize all these variant ways we educate and help create a core sense of what children need to learn in order to be the kind of citizens we need them to be.
Thank you. In light of that, how do we reconcile the federal role with the state role, which many would argue is paramount? That is, each state by state controls the educational system within the states, controls allocation of resources, controls the creation and the funding of school districts, et cetera. How do we reconcile the two? And given the unequal funding of educational resources state by state, is there a way to achieve the goal you just articulated?
I think there is, and I think that the federal government, it's only partially true that states are completely in control of the educational system within their state. The federal government does set an agenda, and you'll notice that. Every time a new Secretary of Education is confirmed, you know, they lay out their platform, and that platform then goes to each of the states, and there is an expectation that those states will make the adjustments, whether it's race to the top, or no child left behind, or under H.W. Bush, when he was looking at revamping the public school system, under Bill Clinton, he was looking at using federal resources to improve the infrastructure, the school buildings, if you will. So the federal government always has an outsized role within the states as state school boards seek to educate their children. Now, the resource issue is the greater issue. And in Kansas, back in 2003, there was a lawsuit brought by the smaller rural and less resourced school districts that there be some sort of equalization of funding, that there would be a pot of money that these taxes would go into, and that money then would be meted out per pupil expenditure on an equitable basis. And they did succeed in that. Yes, it was appealed, but the Kansas Supreme Court upheld that decision. And under the new governor Laura Kelly, I know they've still been struggling with that issue of making sure the resources are there, but there are ways, there are legislative remedies for the resource gap.
I want to take it now from the broad policy, and let's go back to the personal for a minute. Are you still in touch with any of the plaintiffs, any of the other 12 families who were part of the Brown case or any of the other cases? And what has been their experience since that landmark decision?
Yeah, I smile because we call ourselves the Brown v. Board of Education family. They are dear to me. The plaintiffs in Topeka, the 12 moms and the, it was a co of 20 children and 13 parents with Dad, but sadly, there are only two of the children still living, and all of the parents, well, except for my mother, who's 99, will be 100 in May, they've all passed on. But I do know the litigants from Virginia and Delaware and South Carolina and Washington DC, and it is a fabulous group of people. We came together for a two-year period at the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, the grant from the Walton Family Foundation and from the Hallmark Card family, which is in Kansas City, and they funded a two-year workshop that we put on with all the litigants that could come. And what we wanted to do was to teach them the craft of essay writing so that the book that you've mentioned could be published. We wanted their story, we wanted their voice to be heard, we wanted their names to be known, we wanted their images to be seen by this country, so they would no longer just be at all. So the book is a compilation of those essays. It is amazing because it talks about their individual journeys, what happened within their individual families, how these decisions were made, how it impacted their families. The Virginia case, for example, in the aftermath of Brown, not just the Southern Manifesto, which was an egregious pushback, in my view, but in the Virginia case, public officials closed public schools for five years. And the example I always give, if you're an eight-year-old in third grade, you know, five years later, you're 13 years old. You don't go back to third grade. There are people in Farmville, Virginia, white and black, who are still angry with our country because they lost five years of their education, you know, literacy issues. But that's how determined people in this country have been to, hanging on to power and privilege for some. But I'm getting off point here, but I wanted you to know that in knowing these people, I've come to hear their experiences, and they are gut-wrenching. South Carolina, the Briggs family, you know, Mr. Briggs had to leave Somerton, South Carolina. Reverend Elaine's church was burned, his home was burned down. The Stuks family's father, they believe, was killed because it was found under a car that had fallen on him. I mean, there were so many sacrifices. We did not sacrifice that way in Topeka because of the unique history of Kansas. So yes, I do know them, and when President Barack Obama was in office, we were able to take 62 people from the five cases to meet him for the 60th anniversary of Brown v. Board.
Well, that is very powerful. And in light of that experience and that recollection, do you feel that in some ways the school choice argument today is, in fact, a re, sort of packaging of legal segregation, at least for some who advocate for it?
Well, school choice largely speaks to public charter schools. I want to speak to that. I don't know that much about the private charter system, but school choice can be a resegregation tool, if you will, absolutely can be. And that's why public charter schools, and they have to be supervised and come under the banner of the state boards of education or departments of public instruction, which they are in most states. But yes, anything left unchecked can be used nefariously, and school choice is no different. Now, African-American parents continue to be challenged by how to get the best education for their children. You know, vouchers have been offered as a panacea, and that's turned out, in some instances, not to be so. School choice has been waived as the way to get your children educated of the best way. Private schools are oftentimes priced out of the market for the average parent, whether it's African-American or white. But what frustrates me is that public education is just that, and it is funded by the public, and there is an expectation by the public that our children in that setting will be educated. You know, I don't understand how we can talk about failing, underfunded public schools, you know, in a country with this kind of wealth. And is, I don't know if it's an accountability issue, I don't know if it's simply an intentional neglect issue when the schools are populated by Black and Brown children. One of the statements in the Brown decision that I rely on, I'm not necessarily so enamored with the part of the decision that Justice Warren chose to read in the opinion, but the part of the decision that resonates with me, and I think it had meaning on the ground, is when they talked about education being the most important act of state and local government, and that no child could be expected to achieve or succeed in life without the benefit of an education, and that it needed to be provided equitably where it is undertaken by the state and local government. To me, those words are strong. Those are the words that would say to a state or local government that we are demanding of you that you are educating these children regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or any other condition that presents itself. So it's inexcusable to me that we have allowed a narrative about failing, underfunded public schools.
Cheryl, in light of that powerfully articulated critique of our failure to adequately address the needs of public education, if you were the czar of public education in the United States, one of our questioners has asked, what would you do to address this problem and the modern inequities, inequalities in education? Now, we've talked about the Department of Education, are there any other areas where you would have specific suggestions to address these issues?
No, absolutely. For a time in my career, I worked for the Kansas State Department of Education, the State Board of Education, and we would go out and do OCR, Office of Civil Rights Reviews, where we were looking at disability and making sure buildings were accessible. I use that as the premise for what I'm going to say, because I believe that the federal government could, in fact, organize teams at the regional level that would go into every single school district in this country with the intent of assessing what the needs are, evaluating what the shortcomings are, and coming up with ways... evaluating what the shortcomings are, and coming up with ways in partnership with the local administrators, the state departments of instruction, or state boards of education, with the school boards, on how to address those issues. We put a lot of federal money into schools across the country. Why not use that money as a tool to assess and address, if you will? So, you know, my platform would be assess and address, and I would make sure that all 10 federal regions in this country had teams of people whose sole purpose were making sure we were giving the kind of support, assistance, focus, and importance to education.
I'm sure you're familiar with the 2007 decision by the Supreme Court in Parents Involved in Community Schools versus a Seattle school district number one, in which the court held that local school districts could not voluntarily adopt race-conscious student assignment plans in order to address racially segregated schools. What is your thought about that decision, and where do you think that decision places Brown v. Board of Education?
Well, my thoughts about that decision is that we are, it smacks of the Southern Manifesto, let me just be honest, as another means of keeping children separated with the nefarious intent of making sure students of color would remain in less resourced settings and less advantaged settings. So it was, you know, certainly one that was disappointing. But I think that where Brown is concerned, the problem we had, again, in what Justice Warren chose to read, that part of the opinion, because it was the implementation of, you know, in the field of public education, this doctrine of separate but equal has no place. So implementation was all about trying to address who's sitting next to who, because if you're separate, you know, then you're not getting that equal education, so says the Supreme Court. So we are busing children out of African American communities to predominantly white settings so that we can say that we are no longer separate but equal. Here we are. Now, we are creating magnet schools so that we're trying to attract white parents back to inner-city school districts. Kansas City, Missouri is a perfect example of that. Nearly a billion dollars spent on building these world-class facilities to attract white parents back into the urban core for their children to go to school. You know, it's utter nonsense that 67 years after Brown v. Board, we are still fighting over the education of children of color. We're not fighting over the education of white children. So I think that the bigger issue needs to be that part of the Brown decision that says that education is the most important act of state and local government, and no child can expect to achieve in life without the benefit of an education. So if my child is sitting next to everybody in a classroom that looks like them as a child of color, my expectation should be met that they are getting a world-class education. We cannot, you know, rely on head counting, in my view, because it allows people to abdicate their responsibility to actually educate. It shouldn't matter that as a teacher, the children that present themselves to me on day one of school, you know, are the children that by the end of the school year, I'm to have educated to grade level. I was a classroom teacher for four years. I taught sixth grade. I taught in one of the schools that had been segregated in Topeka, but I started in '72. It was a school my mother went to as a first grader through an eighth grader. It was a school my sisters attended up until we relocated once Dad became a pastor. So three generations of us with this school building. It was still 95% African American. And what broke my heart was my white colleagues in that school would sit in the student, in the teacher's lounge, and express their displeasure with being in that setting. Now, how much commitment do you have when you are in the classroom with an attitude that being in that building, surrounded by those children and parents, is somehow viewed as less important and not worthy of your skill as a classroom teacher? Then I went to a school that was nominally white. My challenges there were, the parents were not comfortable with me as an African American educator. You know, people bring their biases with them, they don't leave them at the door. So the challenges are real, but that cannot matter if your job is to be an educator.
Cheryl, thank you for that powerful testimony. We have time for one more question, and it really follows in exactly in what you were just speaking. And that is, do you see more minorities going into education to provide that kind of linkage between the students and the faculty that are needed, between communities of color and the majority community? Do you see today, are we seeing more African American, more Latinx, more others, teachers being part of the public education system in America, or not? And if not, what can we do to address it?
We are not. And when the Brown Foundation started, one of our initial activities and programs was the Brown Teacher Quest program, to get scholarships into the hands of minorities, whether they were indigenous people, Latino, Asian, African American, to become teachers, so that we could have those examples in front of the classrooms. And no, we are not. There are universities in this country that graduate zero teachers of color out of their teacher education classes. Most of the teachers of color come from HBCUs, as we might expect, but still their numbers are meager. And it's sheer, it's a matter of demographics, so I don't want to chastise anyone. You know, African Americans are, what, 12 million, I believe, in this country, and that's everybody, from infants to incarcerated, to elderly, to working age, to college, it's everybody. So sheer demographics won't allow us to predominate the classrooms away, it would be beneficial to do so. But I go back to the statement, that if you have trained as an educator, colleges of education are not training you as an educator of only a certain type of child. You are to be an educator of children. So it should not matter that the majority of teachers are white. In those instances, those teachers have to make certain they are forming a partnership with the parents of color, so that the children see that parent, that person of color, as a partner in their education with that teacher who may not look like them. That sends the message that this teacher has my best interests at heart. I've talked to teachers in settings over the years, conferences and workshops, and I always say that, white teachers, Latino teachers, whoever you are, the thing you have to do is be determined, and to tell your children, your students sitting in front of you, if I'm a white teacher, and all of my students are African American, or I'm a Black teacher, all of my students are white, I have to say to them that what happens in this classroom will be the most important thing you'll ever do in your life, because it is the truth. That's the foundation of our democracy, but it's also the foundation of quality of life that we all aspire to and want for our children. So I won't allow the cop-out of the ethnicity of the person in front of the classroom. My demands are just as high, whoever it is.
Thank you, Cheryl, for this extraordinary opportunity to hear such an historic and personal perspective, not only on one of our nation's most significant Supreme Court cases, Brown v. Board of Education, but on the state of public education in America today. And for those of you in the audience who would like to read more about this important case, let me suggest an excellent book. It's called Simple Justice by Richard Kluger. It was published a while ago, back in 1975, but it is well worth reading. Thank you also to our sponsors and to our audience for attending this program. For, if you would like more information about the Sandra Day O'Connor Institute, please log into sandridayocconorinstitute.com. Thank you, goodbye, and may you all stay safe.
Thank you.